Welcome to continuing coverage of election 2013. Today we have the two candidates for Ward Seven City Council here in Brockton. We have Tim Sullivan and Shirley Azak. Welcome to both of you for being here.
Thank you.
Glad to be here, Mark.
BCA and WXBR are co-hosting this to get information out to all the voters in Brockton so you can make an informed choice on November 5th. We will start with opening statements and I will start first with Tim Sullivan and then Shirley Azak for a minute and then we'll reverse it as we go throughout the debate. So, Tim, you got a minute?
Just a minute or two on this one.
A minute on the opening.
Minute. Good evening. My name is Tim Sullivan. I am the candidate for councillor of Ward Seven. For the past four years, I have served as your elected school committee member in Ward Seven. I have worked very hard with the parents, teachers, principals, parent advisory councils from across the entire ward. Together, our goal has been improving education for kids. I've also been in the public eye as a bus driver for the past 38 years. In the past 14 years, on the board of directors as a commissioner of the Brockton Housing Authority. Six years treasurer and seven years board of director, chairman. Now, I want to work with you on other Ward Seven issues. Crime, creation of ward, creation of crime watchers, roads, bringing in businesses, improving our neighborhoods. I ask for your help so we can work together on these important Ward Seven issues. I need your help on November 5th. Thank you.
And now Shirley, one minute.
Good evening. My name is Shirley Azak. I am a lifelong resident of Brockton. I have, I have my, I'm married, I've been married for 13 years and I have two beautiful daughters in the Brockton Public School System. I ask you to elect me as your Ward Seven City Councillor because I am dedicated to the city. Everything we have is vested in this city. I live here. I have started a business here. I'm a small business owner and I have, everything we have is invested in the city. We have investment properties. So, when I make my decisions as city councillor, I will be thinking of you, residents, small business owners, and parents. So, I ask you to vote for me as your city, Brockton's Ward Seven City Councillor. I have been involved in my community. I've been involved in school, in my children's schools. I was on the Kennedy School Council and also with my church and I'm involved in my community. Thank you.
Okay, well, plenty of time to talk about life experience and everything as we go along. Ron, first question.
Why did you decide to run for Ward Seven City Council? Obviously, the position was open, but what made you decide that this is something that I'm going to do? Was it a passion? Was it an issue that came up where you wanted to change things? What was your motivation?
First Shirley.
I've always had an interest in Brockton, in politics. I've been involved with the elections office. I've worked as an elections warden for almost 16 years. So, I've, the interest has always been there. Of course, the opportunity was open because the current city councillor was running for in the mayor race. I want to make, not necessarily a change, but make a difference in Brockton. I want to, as a resident, I see many things that aren't working, that have issues, and I would like to work together with my fellow councillors to fix those issues, to work on them. This is a great city we live in and I truly believe in it, so that's why I'm running.
Okay, Tim?
I too do agree. It is a great city that we live in. And to get back to your question, Chris McMillan, the old Ward Seven councillor, asked me to run and he endorsed me. That was put in the paper way back in August. And so, I decided then, yes, I'm the only one with experience. I had already had four years on the school committee. I already had 14 years on other boards in the city. And I feel like I'm the only one that was how to get things done. One of the last debates, the two opponents of mine said, "We can change everything. We can do whatever we want and we're going to do this and that." And that's not how it works. Anybody going into the city council already has to have at least five other votes to get anything passed in this city. And that's just how it works. Thank you.
Okay, any further follow-up on that question?
I would like to follow up. I disagree with Mr. Sullivan. He has stated, I never stated that I could change everything by myself.
No, not you, the other.
Okay, but you just said that we both did, so I disagree with you. You tend to put it in false information regarding myself, so I'd like to clarify that. I believe it's teamwork. It's a community that I'm looking to, I'm looking to work with my community. It's a community effort. I'm not going in there to change anything all by myself.
Thirty-second follow-up?
No, no further questions.
Okay. My question is going to be about, you both outlined a little bit about your life experience. Tell us why you're the better candidate for city council in Ward Seven and what you're going to bring specifically to the city council? Tim first.
Number one, I'm going to bring experience. Number two, I didn't mention, I moved to Brockton in 1972, which is about 41, 42 years ago. I've had five children. All of them went to Brockton Public Schools. All have graduated. Now, my grandchildren are starting to go to Brockton Public Schools. And I love it here. When I first moved, I thought it was great. Brockton had everything from movie theaters, shopping malls, all kinds of little shops and venues. It all seemed to be slipping away and I wanted to bring some of that back. Thank you.
Shirley?
First of all, can I clarify? And Mr. Sullivan keeps saying that he has experience. He's not on the council. A school committee is something that's totally different. So, I believe we're on equal grounds here. I am a small business owner. I know how to make business decisions. I have degrees in business as well as design and I know what business owners are looking for. I know what residents are looking for, parents, as far as safety for their children. I know that's a big concern. And small business owners, I think the biggest thing is customer service. People want customer service, somebody to make the city a business-friendly place, to keep them here and to attract new business to them. As far as, you know, experience on the council, I know there's going to be things that are going to come up that I, we don't know what's going to come up once they, once we're in council. So, I don't think anybody's prepped to go in there and already have experience to know what to deal with. So, I am prepared to take on anything. I'm committed to serving my community, to serving them on the council. And as far as, I have a lot of life experiences. Once again, I grew up here. I know the issues that the city has. I know the issues that parents have, that residents have, and that small business owners do. And so, that's why I believe I'm the better candidate. Thank you.
Okay, next question, Ron?
Need a little follow-up on that?
Sure.
If you don't mind. Just a one-minute follow-up. Ms. Azaker has...
I'm sorry. It's Azak, not Azaker.
Excuse me. Has stated that she has more experience than I do and I totally disagree. I've been on the Housing Authority, which is a board in Brockton for the past 14 years, and also on the school committee, which is an elected board for the past four years, which the mayor is the chairman of. And both boards work similar to the city council. You have to have the votes behind you before you do anything. I just wanted to make that clear and I really think I am the best candidate and the most qualified.
Can I comment on that?
Yep, thirty seconds.
Mr. Sullivan, you keep saying you're on the board of the Housing Authority. I found that to be a conflict of interest with you being on the board and also being running for a council seat. What do you, what do you think?
I disagree.
I think ultimately, when the election is over, that you can't, you probably can't serve on that board, I would, I would think. I'm not 100% sure, but I know there's laws about serving on different boards, but when you're running before you vacate, I'm not sure. Next question, is it my turn or is it yours?
No, I don't.
We've been doing this a while today, so bear with it.
Mine is a two-part question, of which the two parts have no resemblance to the first or second. Now, I'll ask the first question. Just, just a yes or a no on this because people may not be familiar with you necessarily. Your opinion on the power plant, yes or no?
No.
No.
Okay, let's move on. I'm not going to dwell.
We see that.
Yes, for a change. Okay. Let's, let's talk about when you meet the residents. Obviously, you're both running for a seat that's vacant. When you talk to them, what is their biggest concern for Ward Seven and what do you say to them?
Tim first.
The biggest concern for Ward Seven is the roads and naturally, the power plant, even though it's probably the furthest away, they don't want the power plant. And I happen to agree with them. The people in Ward Four do not want it and the people in Ward Seven do not want it. So, I don't want it either. But I'd like to see some of the empty stores filled, some of the empty restaurants filled, more police officers on the streets, and get the crime watchers back to movement again. Thank you.
Shirley?
I have been walking the streets of Ward Seven, meeting a lot of residents and I, I'll be honest, I actually enjoy it. I love seeing residents. I love feeling that sense of community and I think people, it's hard when you first walk up to a door. You don't know what to expect because you get a little, you know, you're afraid of the rejection, but knock on wood, I haven't had that yet and I enjoy talking to them. Honestly, I haven't, none of them have had any major issues. You know, they've been very friendly. I think they, I've said to them that I would like to have more, more meetings, make it easier for them to know when the meetings will be, or when our ward meetings will be and getting them more involved. I think every, there's, everybody's missing a little bit of that sense of community. We need to get back our community, feel like we're one again. I, you know, they feel, everybody's in their own home. They don't know who their neighbors are or what's going on in the next door to them. So, I'd like to bring back that sense of community back to Ward Seven. As far as filling, you know, storefronts, Ward Seven doesn't really have, we're pretty filled right now. The mall is the best it's looked in years and there aren't that many empty storefronts. I believe there's only a couple of empty businesses in, in Ward Seven. Streets, people haven't complained that much. I mean, some lights, but that, those are issues we're going to deal with once we're, once we're in office. And I will be there. I will be present for the residents. I will answer their phone calls and I think that's what they want. They want somebody that's going to be dedicated to them, to answer them and to, to get the job done.
Following up on that, I actually give you a little more time, so I'm going to give Mr. Sullivan some time. Within the next question though, on communication, how do you intend to communicate with the residents of, of Ward Seven as the city councillor?
My plan, the first plan I had was to combine the Montello Business Association and the ward meetings together and try to find a central location. Their meeting's in the church right now, St. Peter Steins. And I'm trying to just find a central location for all of them. To get back to Shirley's, I totally disagree that the storefronts are filled and the biggest one is Chili's Restaurant on Oak Street, has to be filled right away. There are people have been complaining about that since it's closed, not to mention the other stores in the mall. I wasn't kind of worried about the mall, but there are empty stores in there that I want to see those filled too. Thank you.
Okay, Shirley, I'm going to let you answer that and then I'm going to ask a follow-up.
Okay. I believe Chili's and the Howard, the Old Howard School are the only ones that are actually not filled now. They've all been filled, from what I understand. So, that's, you know, that's how I feel about Ward Seven. I believe it's, it looks great. We can work on getting it cleaner. You know, a lot of our community volunteers are cleaning up different parts of the city and I think that that's great. I would like the city to also take part of that, not just leave it up to the volunteers that are cleaning up the city. But, you know, as far as storefronts, I don't believe they are closed. I do disagree though that you should combine the Montello Business Association with the ward meetings. They're two totally different things. I don't think they go together. Ones, those are business owners that are discussing their issues and the residents, I think, need their own meeting.
Okay, I'm going to go back to communication. Ward meetings is one way to do them. There are other ways to communicate besides ward meetings. Any new approaches, novel approaches, new technology, old technology? I asked you both with the third person in the race about cable TV and, and radio and everything like that. Just your thoughts on how to get the word out and how to get people more involved, Shirley?
I would love to use the ca, like you had mentioned during the last debate, I would love to use the cable channel to get the dates out or for the meetings. Use the radio here for, to let residents know when the meeting is. There's, we can do, you know, internet, we get emails. That's something that we would need to get directly from the residents, you know, email them directly. It's, it could also, it's already posted on, it's already posted on the Brockton website. I think there's many different ways we can get the residents, even talking to them door-to-door, doing a little flyer to remind them. I think people need to be reminded when the meetings are. Sometimes they might jot them down and miss them. So, I think just communication in general, no matter what it is, it's going to work to get the residents out to these meetings.
Thank you. Tim?
Yes, after our last debate, Shirley was there. I totally agree that the cable TV should be a part of our communication through the people of Ward Seven. And now, through the radio station, which I never thought of before. I wasn't even sure where it was, Ron, till tonight. And yes, it can be used two or three times a month, just to let people know what's going on. It's a good communication, as well as Facebook, as well as the internet, all the social media. I think that all works good, just to let people know what's really going on. Thank you.
Thank you. Ron?
You both alluded to, well, Tim especially, you alluded to filling storefronts. How do you fill a storefront, both of you? I mean, how do you go about filling a storefront?
Shirley first?
Once again, I said that we don't have many that are empty in Ward Seven, but I think making, making it easier for businesses to deal with city hall or make it, making it friendly for, first of all, making it easy for them to come in and want to do business here in the city. And that's, it's, it's not just one thing, it's many things. Of course, it has to be safer and has to, we have to provide some interest for them to want to come in and want to do business in our city. And once again, I'm all about customer service. I think we have to be there for them, answer their questions. If they call and have question, have somebody answer them, the hardest, I hear that a lot of times people call and it's hard to even get the right person or the right department to speak to. So, it's, it's all about being there for them, helping them if they need certain paperwork or letting them, letting them know who to contact, making it easy for them to come into our city.
Tim?
Yes, my plan would be to do it a little bit in reverse. In other words, I would try and seek out people for the empty stores, like the Howard School, number one. That's the biggest one in our ward. It's an abandoned building. Yes, the school department does cut the grass, but that's it, nothing else. The city has to come along, plow, plow the driveways. The old Chili's Restaurant, same thing. Try to seek a new person to take it over. A restaurant chain, maybe. Somebody call them and say, "Look at, we have an empty store here for a couple of, for a couple of years. But all moving in here." You know, just like a friendly atmosphere to bring them in.
Okay, on friendliness and customer service, both of you have different experiences. Shirley, you own a business that you sell flowers to clients and I know you're being nice not saying the name of the business. Tim, you do customer service every day, driving, driving the back bus and dealing with the Housing Authority and dealing with the parents of the kids in the schools. So, do you think, here's my first part of the question, do you think the city of Brockton is customer service friendly to its clients that try to do business with it? Both residents with like a tax bill question or a business coming into local? And if you don't, what would you do differently? Tim first.
And the answer is, I do not think the city is helpful to customers with their customer service or their customer relations, however you want to put it, that, you remember a year ago, we had trouble with the meters. It was just like walking into a stone wall. You had no answers. Nobody wanted to even talk to you. And if you had a bill of $50,000 or $60,000, you were on your own. You know, luckily, that whole thing got straightened out quite a bit. And that is not my style. I like to handle things right, right at the front, as it is now, when somebody calls me about a problem on the school department, all the housing authority gets taken care of and fixed right away. And I think that's the way it should be.
Shirley?
I, I don't believe city hall is customer friendly. I've had experience, personal experience there and I, I think we can work on it. Once again, it's a group effort. We do need to make it easier for people to, friendly or not so standoffish, not, not make the residents feel like they're on the, you know, the wrong side because everybody has issues for whatever reason. Once again, you know, a lot of people have problems with the water department with their bills and as councillor, I would like to be there for them, to deal with these issues, take them to city hall, go with them, to figure out where the problem is and, and help them work with it, work with it, make, resolve the issues with them. That's something that I didn't realize I had available to me when I had problems. So, I would like to be there for them, give them some customer service and, you know, we're all, we're all working together with workers at city hall. I would like to see them, you know, maybe if they understood the issues also, it would make it easier for them to help the residents.
Thank you. Ron?
What inefficiencies do you see in the city council as it stands right now, if you see any at all?
Shirley first?
I, I mean, I don't see any specific, anything specific with, with the city council right now.
Tim?
Yeah, they seem, they can't seem to agree on every single subject that comes up, like the power plant, for example. There's, there's way too many pros and cons that groups should get together and just vote on it. You know, I was under the impression that was already gone. Now, it's coming back again. And just to be more consistent.
Okay. School committee has hearing of visitors, where people can come and talk to the school committee. They don't get any answer. They just can speak to the school committee and bring up an issue. Do either one of you think that that's a good idea for the city council? Tim first.
Yes, I do. It's, I mean, you're right, there is no answers, but it gives you a chance to write down their notes, write down what they're feeling and you can look into it. You know, after the meeting, I can even take their number and call them back. You know, if I thought it was real important, which I have done in the past. And I think the city council should do that as well.
Shirley?
I, I believed it was being, I mean, the council meetings are open to, the residents have a, they haven't all attended. No? Okay, well, then I think it should be. Then I have viewed most of them. I view all the ones that are aired, the finance meetings, all that, and where I have seen residents attend. So, I do believe then they should be open, allow somebody to come in, listen to their views, know what their, what the issues are and then work on them. I'd like to, I would like to do that on a ward level and that's what, I would like to bring the agenda in front of the ward residents, my Ward Seven residents and have them, work with them and then bring my decisions to city hall in front of the council.
Just one quick follow-up on that.
Sure.
Both the school committee and the housing authority had that hearing of visitors and what happens is you get three minutes to make your case. And if they're getting real close to making it and a minute has gone by, the mayor runs the meeting and she'll, she'll let them go. At the Brockton Housing Authority meeting, I run the meeting and I, same thing. If they're getting to the point, I let them go as long as they can to make that point. And I just really believe that is a good, good thing, even though there is no answers, no feedback, it's a good thing to happen.
Shirley, any more?
Well, I mean, I'd like to see them eventually get feedback, eventually get their answers because there's nothing more frustrating than bringing up an issue and not having an answer for it. So, I would like to see them eventually find a way to get answers for the residents, not just let them talk just to talk. That would drive me crazy, so.
Just so you know, the present rules don't allow for it at the city council. It would have to be probably an ordinance change to do it. And I always kind of wondered with towns around us, with boards of selectmen, you can do open, you know, a hearing of visitors. We do it with the school committee that I'm on and it's just kind of, I guess it's wishful thinking on my part. Ron?
I agree, Mark. Oh, you wanted me to ask a question?
I'm just curious what we have for time left. We've got about eight minutes. We've time for one more question.
Very good. What is your financial acumen because actually, you're the finance committee. What is your background in that? Will you be able to understand everything that's brought up as far as making those decisions and voting?
Shirley? Go ahead, Tim.
I'm first. My, as I stated in the opening, I was on the housing, I still am on the housing authority and I was treasurer for six years. And as treasurer, I had a $1 million per month budget, which did not include the wages. That's all their bills, all their Section Eight vouchers that I had to pay and every other small thing that came up, not the wages, that was separate. And like I said, that was a million dollars a month and that budget had to be budget, I mean, that budget had to be balanced and balanced every single month for the full 12 months. And like I said earlier, I think I had the experience to do it. So, a $12 million budget per year is pretty good.
Shirley?
I've had my business for almost eight years and I balance a budget constantly and I know how to work with budgets and how to not overspend and how to read budgets. So, I'm, I'm prepared for the job, but with any new job, I know there will be possibly some things that I may not have come across and I'm willing to learn and I will work with my fellow councilmen and I will, I will get the job done. I will do whatever needs to be done.
Can I do a follow-up there? Quick one?
I have much time? Yes, quick one.
How would you have voted on the city budget as it was presented a few months ago? All but two councillors voted for it, to approve it. How would you have voted?
Shirley first.
I believe you're asking about the tax increase, the, I would have voted, but I would have voted against it. I believe that there was, we could have worked something else out.
I agree with Shirley the same thing, that taxes, our taxes are high enough as it is. We have to find another way to fund our city, to make everything work. I'm well aware we need money for the police, fire, public works. And I know taxes are our income, but to increase the taxes at this time, when everybody, right in the middle of the government shutdown and everything else, I think was a bad move.
Okay, we will go to closing statements at this point. Shirley first?
I believe I am the best candidate to serve you as your Ward Seven City Councillor. I have experience as a small business owner, a parent and a resident of Ward Seven. I'm dedicated to getting the job done. I will do whatever needs to be done because I invested in the city. Everything I have is here and I will work for you and with you to bring our voice to city hall. I hope you will vote for me on November 5th. That's just in a few more weeks, so I hope you vote for me. My name's the first name on your ballot, Shirley Azak, and I look forward to working and serving you as your Ward Seven City Councillor. Thank you.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you, Mr. Ron Van Dan, for giving me the opportunity to speak directly to the Ward Seven people. And thank you, Mark Lindy, for the good discussion at all the challenges facing us in the ward. I am a consensus builder. I built a consensus that saved the Raymond School as of the superintendent had condemned it. I fought for major capital improvements at North Junior High, the Raymond School and six others, where the idea just seemed populist. The mayor put myself and four others on a green roof committee and we had raised $34 million for the roofs, doors, windows, ceilings and some outside repairs at eight of our schools. My hallmark is a constituent service. I will work with, work with you on crime and building crime watchers in every neighborhood in our ward. work with, work with you on crime and building crime watchers in every neighborhood in our ward, on improving our roads and making our neighborhood more livable, on advocating for serious, and in finding a restaurant to replace the one, which is the old Chili on East Street, on Oak Street. I am Tim Sullivan, and I ask for your vote on November 5th, and I pledge to you my entire being for working with you to improve Ward Seven. Thank you.
Thank you both, and thank you, Ron.
Thank you, and thank you.
Great to educate the voters in Ward Seven and around the city. Most importantly, you have a choice. Voice your choice. Get out and vote. Top the turnout in the preliminary election, because there will be new city councillors, as is evidenced by the, both of the folks here in this ward. So, thank you for watching, and stay tuned for more election coverage here in the city of champions.